Meeting to order at 7:01. We stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
What do you mean to the flag of the United States where the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
So, any changes to the agenda?
Madam Deputy Mayor, at this point, the only change we would have is that the housing presentation that was under reports was moved to the work session and will continue after the business meeting.
So, adapting and approving the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, Novak, second by Berg.
And because we are in a room meeting, we'll need to do all of those by roll call.
Okay, so, we'll start with roll call. Amanda?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Myself, aye. No presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements. Public comment, I thought I saw Tom on here.
Commissioner Wolf, if you have anything tonight?
I am on here.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
I'm good. Hey, just a couple of things here tonight, the that CARES Act that they kind of stopped here at the end of the session and didn't vote on, or somebody voted on, they had some agreements. The governor just passed the senate version, which gives the counties fifty-five percent and the cities forty-five percent of those dollars. So I think, and maybe Tom, Terry, you know best, but is it twenty-five bucks per capita in your city?
No, it's actually higher than that, it's more like seventy-four, so.
I saw the seventy-five, and the county gets a hundred and twenty-one or so, I can't remember, but I think for us it's a hundred, seventeen million or something. So anyhow, that's gonna be very welcome for your city, our county, and all the cities in Scott County. They are going to edit on two and ninety-one there, so I think the sooner that gets done, the better. And we are hopefully gonna start opening up more county things here quicker than we had anticipated, especially like the libraries, the household hazardous waste, and some other stuff where, you know, we don't get that much business on some of the libraries anyhow, and so I think people can distance themselves and we can open those up, we've got the people there anyhow, so that's all I have tonight, any questions?
Thanks, Tom.
Nope, I don't have anything, Commissioner Wolf.
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll hang up and listen.
Anybody else out there for a public comment? All right, then we'll go ahead with the consent agenda, any changes to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Berg, second by Novak, roll call, Berg.
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda is passed. No public hearings, onto general business. Tom, what do you have for us?
Nothing under general business this evening, Madam Deputy Mayor. We just have reports.
Yep. So administration.
So the council asked at previous meeting, they had a discussion related into our public meeting formats and whether or not we want to continue to operate in a remote fashion, be discussed at every meeting, because it is a little bit of a moving target. At this point in time, nothing has really changed since the last meeting with regards to the governor turning the dial, so, but the council did ask us to discussion, but we have no specific recommendations from staff, because there's been no change in circumstances. I guess I'd be looking for feedback from the council, we just continue as, status quo, until the next meeting.
Does anyone, Josh or Amanda, do you guys want to chime in?
I'm good with hearing them as we are now. We visit at the next meeting.
Josh, you're okay with that?
Yep, sounds good to me.
All right.
Just a couple of other quick items, as Commissioner Wolf indicated, CARES Act dollars are gonna be allocated through an administrative process as opposed to through legislative process. Those are like LGA dollars where it's purely discretionary, they do have to be related to reimbursing the city for COVID-related expenses. We do have some, we're in the process of tracking those and identifying what expenses we might have through the end of the year, but I think it's fair to say at this point that we will probably fall significantly short of what the total potential allocation is, simply because COVID did not have the same impact on our operations that it had on other cities, just due to our nature.
Does this include what we had to pay for Parks and Rec, Police Department, Fire Department, does that all included in that, or is it just at City Hall expenses?
No, so for example, it would be citywide.
Citywide, okay.
Examples would be any of the PPE that we needed to purchase in order to respond to it, potentially any staff time that we had to dedicate to responding to the COVID issue, potentially any technology that we had to buy for, by a subscription to, to allow us to function during the COVID, and it's related to COVID response, so there may be, and as the pandemic, in its term, in terms of the pandemic, not necessarily tied to the governor's order or anything else, there may be expenses that we still incur as we continue to make investments and make, changing our operations or making a more COVID-proof, so to speak, with regards to how we operate. But I believe our total allocation is over three hundred thousand dollars, and we're, it's not going to be anywhere near that unless they change the current criteria as we interpret, so.
And that wouldn't allow the cities to do anything to help local businesses or anything like that, that it could be an offset or a pass-through, or, I mean, I'm not trying to milk it by any means, but.
I think business-related was a separate part of the CARES Act, generally in the form of the PPP loans and a lot of stuff that was done through the Small Business Administration or EDA, and so there are a couple of things that are coming down the pike that are gonna be done through D, Renee and I just had a conversation about it late this afternoon, the city really doesn't have any role in that, other than advising businesses of the opportunity to access those programs, and our staff actually, it's a relatively small window, actually tomorrow our staff's gonna be out pounding the bricks, advise, trying to get our local businesses educated about that program, maybe Renee can speak a little bit more about that.
Sure, there's two programs, I think the one Tom is referring to now is offered through the state to small businesses, and permits grants of ten thousand dollars to small businesses. I've looked at the eligibility requirements, it basically has to be a not-for-profit, home-based businesses are not eligible, except daycare providers, the window is only open for like another week and a half, and then there's a second program that's being offered by the Scott County CDA, and these are five thousand dollar grants that are available, and that window is again gonna be open for about ten days, I think, and that opens, I think, on July 2nd. So we are gonna go out, I've visited three businesses already and dropped off information, and tomorrow, we're gonna try to hit everybody and just have a face-to-face conversation, hopefully with the business owner, and the applications seem to be simple from what I'm seeing, I don't, if they need staff's help, I, you know, we can offer it, but I think that the application procedure is gonna be pretty easy, their job is to make them aware of it, I guess my hope would be that every business in our community applies for both programs.
Any other question on the COVID item? And just one other item, I was going, hoping to get the information out in a council update for potential discussions tonight, but I wanted to make the council aware of it. We had a request from a resident for the city council to consider a senior discount on their city utility bill. Basically, they have a friend, we have a senior in town who has a friend that lives in Lakeville, Lakeville apparently offers a thirty percent discount for seniors on their utility bill. It's a question, quite honestly, that's never come up before, so we didn't have any information about that topic on hand, we've been doing some research on it, but I wanted to provide the council with some basic research on it to see if they wanted for discussion purposes. So I intend to have something out on that prior to the next council meeting, so if the council wants to go there, they can just bring it up under council discussion if they so chose. A couple of things that we found is of various cities, there are only two cities that can do it, one is Lakeville, the other one is Belle Plaine, we're getting more information related to those programs, their success, their intent on continuing to those programs, that type of information, and details on how they operate, so we would be more informed as staff for that conversation, but I won't, I promised the resident that I would forward the information to the council, so at least one would be aware of the topic, but we just, quite honestly, couldn't get it ready for tonight's meeting, and we don't have a full council tonight either, so our plan would be to get something to the council and just have for information purposes prior to the next meeting, and the council can decide whether or not they wanna dig further into it.
When you're reaching out to Lakeville and Belle Plaine, can you check on like per capita, as far as how many are taking this discount versus how many people actually live there, so we can kind of gauge?
Yes, when Steph, I've got Steph working on this research project, she digged some information from both cities related to the number of people they have participating. It'll also be interesting to maybe take a little bit of data as far as what the demographics, so those communities are as far as they, their population, I would hazard a guess that the median age in their populations is a little bit higher than it's helping the market, where the youngest city in the county, and if you look around your neighborhoods, that's pretty obvious, so it'd be interesting to see, we would probably try and gauge based on that, the likely number of households, we're trying to see if there's a way we can calculate or sway what the likely number of participants might be in such a program, so that we'll have some information available, that's part of what we want to try and pull together before tonight.
Yeah, that would have been my question, you know, what percentage of our community is gonna qualify, and then you take seventy percent or fifty percent of those that qualify that actually elect to do it, what that financial hit or lack of a hit would be.
Anything else?
I'm not under this item, I do have some, a few things under other areas.
Okay, public works?
Corey had nothing for me to relate to the council.
Chief Brady?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Council members, real quick, I wanted to just touch base with you, you probably didn't know, but we had a big detour project start in town, a big construction project, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's caused quite a stir, as you know, social media blew up that very first day on the fifteenth, and I have to commend the council, we had it planned months ago, and so we weren't caught by surprise, and we put those plans in place, so those plans were, obviously, you know, we striped the roadway to narrow the driving lanes, especially in the curvy sections where there's a lot of research show that that slows traffic down in the fine driving path. Two, we authorized extra patrols for the police department to dedicate staff to not have to take calls, but only work those routes. Here to tell you, in the ten days that this has started from the fifteenth to today, we've had six extra dedicated shifts of three hours each, so we put eighteen hours of extra patrol. All those shifts have been either during the morning rush or the afternoon rush, and just to give you some perspective, in a typical month, we'll do approximately a hundred traffic stops, give or take, some longer months in the summer will maybe do a hundred and forty. In that ten days, regular staff and those detour, detoured dedicated patrol have done a hundred and ten traffic stops, and of those, we've done a hundred either verbal warnings, citations, or written warnings, and the breakdown is kind of typical, what we do in a normal month, sixty-seven of those hundred and nine were verbal warnings, and what we did is lower our threshold, might not normally stop thirty-five under thirty and perform a traffic stop, but due to the high volume, the location of that speeding, we did perform traffic stops on those, so it is again an educational-based enforcement detail, not heavy ticketing detail, of those hundred and nine, twenty-nine were written tags, and I do have the details on, I didn't break it down, but of those, twenty-nine, only about ten are for speeding, because the threshold, again, the judges and the prosecutors don't like citations at five miles an hour speed limit because of the distance, you know, your speed out there could be a few miles off, and really the intent there, so a lot of those violations that we actually wrote tickets for were seatbelt. Today, we had taxi, and actually, due to the increased enforcement, we've got a lot of drivers with no driver's license off the road that were driving through there, and then the other big one is no proof of insurance, people that don't have their proper proof of insurance. So again, like our normal model, education-based enforcement, slow people down, this is a detour route where you headed, educate them where the actual detour was so they can drive around. First aid was obviously the worst that we've noticed, in general, we've noticed a decline, a steady decline as the detour has been going, we worked with the county to get better signage up, and that has helped, so overall, we're doing everything we can to really hit those areas, go ahead, Mayor.
Just a quick question, of those hundred and nine people, do you know how many were actually Elko New Market citizens?
Mass majority.
Okay.
Mass majority of the tickets were, I would say, local.
Okay.
Elko New Market, townships, right outside, and then New Prague would combine to be even most, go ahead, sir.
So Brady, just in your career here in Chaska, when you have these types of projects or type of details where you're intended to take care of all that extra traffic coming through the neighborhoods, when you actually find the most common violators, is there, is it pretty evenly distributed between people outside the community or neighborhood and people that are from the community neighborhood, or do you notice that it tends to slant one way or the other?
So heavily, when we do any type of enforcement detail in a specific area, it's hugely swayed, it is the neighbors that live in that area that are complaining about the traffic that you end up citing for traffic, very common, and if you think about it, makes sense, right? You drive closer to your house most of the time, and that is who you're gonna speed. Now, people don't recognize it when you're driving a car, but when you're standing in your front lot and you see these traffic violations, they're optical illusions, a lot of times on Glenboro Drive especially, Aaron Drive, very curvy roads, curbs and hill give the illusion of speed to vehicles, so when you're standing there, you notice it, when you're driving, you don't, and the offenders are people who live in that area. Time and time again, when we do speed details on a, say, a certain road, it's the people that live right around there, and oftentimes, it's, I remember one time in Chaska, one of the biggest social media, this is before social media, but one of the persons who would call the most and complain was one of the people that got a speeding ticket about a block away from her home in this particular case, so we're seeing heavily, the people that, from our community are the ones that are being cited, and it makes sense too, when you're locked, you tend to drive a little slower, but you can drive a little faster if you didn't know there was a detour and you're trying to make up time. On top of those dedicated patrols where we brought people in on time off, we did, in ten days, just with our regular staff, we managed twenty-seven extra patrol details, and that's where myself included for a bunch of them, but the other officers will dedicate our time to the detour route, and I didn't, I ran out of time, got tied up on other stuff I was trying to collect, but I would imagine we've spent at least probably fifteen to twenty hours just on the detour route as well, so we're throwing a ton of resources the best we can, during the first presentation, I was able to, we got another email asking for, hey, I live here, can we get more enforcement there, and I'm just constantly reminding people, we're doing our best, we only have one officer out at a time, and that detour route shortcut is two, three miles long, we're going to be in one spot, so we're doing the best we can. Some notes from the tracks, some traffic studies that we've done, the volumes understandably are up, more so on Aaron Drive, we're seeing about a threefold increase in traffic when there is no detour, to now, so we're seeing about three times as many cars, and then in Glenboro, we're seeing about twice as many cars. Average speeds went up, crept up a little bit, however, the eighty-fifth percentile, so eighty-five percent of that traffic are the exact same speeds as we're seeing before, and again, you're heightened sensitivity to it when you're seeing more traffic and you mentally know that these people are doing shortcuts, you know, through, so, and then the excessive speed, we're seeing your forty-fives or more in a thirty zone, there are also before and after very few cars, and one of the things that's hard for us to tell is if I'm going through with my license sirens to a medical and we're monitoring that street, it's gonna pick up my forty-five or fifty-five miles an hour, I'm going through license sirens to a heart attack or something, so it's hard to tell how many of these are fire trucks, police trucks, or police cars going through, but we're just, basically, the conclusion of that is we're seeing a lot more traffic, but not a lot more speed, and we're gonna continue, but the overall trend is the traffic is going down, so that's why every day the first week, we had extra patrols, people coming in on their days off, this week we had three, we're gonna kind of monitor to see what type of traffic we have to determine, because those are extra costs to the department into our budget, is staffing people we didn't have a plan for, so we're gonna monitor that, see how much extra enforcement we'll throw to it, but we're in it for the long haul, we're gonna keep doing our best and trying to take care of it for everybody, but I know it's a big concern, so Tom and I came up with this idea to just give you an update of what we've done so far.
I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. We've been trying to have that increased presence, sorry, you would not think there's only one officer working at most of these times, because we're trying to be so visible, so.
You guys are doing phenomenal, I mean, I live on Aaron, and I, honestly, I don't see, I mean, there's a slight increase, but it's just cars.
Well, the volumes that we're seeing, when you think about the actual capacity of those roads, even with the increase, we're lower than the capacity of those roads, just based on my experience, Brady's experience, Renee's experience, Corey's experience, working here in other communities, when you have projects like this, you are going to have feedback from the residents in those neighborhoods, you're basically taking their normal experience and you insert it, a lot of additional traffic, relatively speaking, that's understandable. I think that was exacerbated though, with the fact that that first day and a half, we had much, much, much more traffic than we even had at the end of the week, and there's two things to that, one, and that was the first impression and the lasting impression on, on a lot of those residents, the first issue is, of course, everybody trying to find their way around, so until everybody finds that cheaper, or not cheaper, faster, less hassle, make the move kind of way to get around, it takes a couple of days for it to sort out, the other thing is, there were some things with signage that we had identified as staff, well, Brady, by observing traffic, staff, after going out and looking at, getting, we would get calls and feedback about the signage going on, taking, there was clearly some things that needed to be improved with the signage, so we think the combination of people getting things figured out, plus some of the improvements on the signage along the detour route helped, and I think we're at levels, we're gonna, you know, it's gonna taper off, we're gonna maintain a constant level, but as you've noticed, a lot of the discussion on social media has also tapered off, direct course, directly corresponds with that, has tapered off quite a bit, too, so.
We just wanna, I also spend a lot of time reminding people why this is happening, the intersection of two and Natchez is horrible, it's near deadly, we've had dozens of horrible crashes there, and this isn't just for no good causes, for a good cause, and we have to suffer through it to get a better intersection, that's greatly gonna impact everybody's, it's gonna increase the time to get through there and make it so much more safer, so there's a lot of good to the community coming from this headache that we're dealing with, and you gotta remember, a lot of people that are complaining, they're at home, and so they see it, whereas many of us, you're right, you go to work, you're only there for certain hours of the day, maybe you're getting home at the tail end, so it's a real concern, and we understand it, so we're not just saying, ah, it's not really a concern, it, it's a huge concern, and I feel for the people that have kids on bikes and everything, and we're trying to do everything we can, so it's not like we're not trying, so I just want to impress that anybody that may be listening, we're, we're stretching everything as soon as we can to get all those controls out there, so. Thank you.
I just throw in too, I mean, this is another silver lining of COVID slash lockdown, there's less people probably driving this time, so we might be benefiting from the timing of all this, for those of us working at home, not on the streets, so.
I think, I think you're doing a great job, keep it up.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'll pass it on to everybody.
Thank you.
I'd appreciate Officer Steve swinging by with the new guy giving me crap about leaving my garage open in the middle of the day.
Well, we, we told him to train in with all our frequent, everybody sees frequent flyers, and so we haven't go over to that garage.
I even had the in-laws over, my wife came out, and my garage has been shut every night now, so it was a good return.
Fantastic.
Anything for the Fire Department?
The chief had nothing for me to relate to council.
He is rich, I thought I saw him. There he is, Rich, do you have anything?
I have nothing for you, thank you.
Oh, okay.
That's not a joke.
No joke?
I retroactively again yield my time to Brady.
All right, let's see, community development?
Renee, did you have any updates for the council?
I do not have any further updates, other than that business update, which we already touched on.
All right, parks? You're on here.
The only item I really have for the council on that is Mark and I have completed both first and second round interviews with the candidates, Corey Schweick, based on his role in interaction, member of the management team, interaction at that position was also included in second round interviews, we have selected eight months to move on for background check, we expect that we'll get the background checked right after the Fourth of July weekend, the paperwork, and then we'll have to move forward, but that usually takes two to three weeks, depending on the complexity of the background of the individual, so we would be in a position to make a conditional offer, potentially as early as late July with a start date, you know, somewhere in that mid-July timeframe, if the offer is expected, so one of the big things that we found regarding sort of candidates is there seem to be clear groupings, we had individuals who have full-time positions, this would be a supplemental position for them, and they tend to be individuals who are looking to get into that field and move out of where they are, and this is a good way that they can do that, is to start part-time here, and gain experience to go someplace else, or if this position grows potentially to be their full-time job, if this could become their full-time job, those quite honestly were our top candidates, we had the, I just got out of school ones, who have bright futures, but really, quite honestly, did not have the necessary background experience to be able to do the position as we're envisioning it, they would be very good candidates for a position that would work for the position that we're hiring, but they're really not there, and then we had candidates who, quite honestly, were good people, but just had no relevant experience to the position, one of the challenges that we find is with the position is, I think we would have a, there's two that we found, one is we would have a larger pool if it was a full-time job with benefits, so it's the, hey, I'm gonna work half-time, just the current labor market, generally, if you're a good individual, a solid skill set, you can generally go get a full-time job with benefits somewhere, I mean, there's more opportunities for you, so we're looking for people who have the flexibility to want to do that, and that's where I think we're seeing people making a shift and they're going to take a hit or make a sacrifice to put their toe in the water in this field and transition. The other area in which we think we might be losing it is if you're looking for somebody who's at an entry level position. is if you're looking for somebody who's at an entry-level position, who maybe has more experience, but is willing to make the jump up because of the current environment related to COVID and benefits that are being provided by the state and feds for people who are currently out of work. A lot of the park and recreation staff and a lot of municipalities have been basically laid off for the season because of programs and everything else being shut down. We might be fighting a little bit of, it's, they make their money sitting on the bench, and they'll go back to their regular job when things pick up than it is for them to explore a half-time position that has no benefits at this particular point in time. So there's a couple of things I think we, that impacted us as we were working through. However, at the end of the day, we did them receiving a solid pool. We had two really good top candidates, one of which we had pass on based on their availability because of their full-time position. And, you know, splitting hairs between them and the other one was really, really solid, and we're moving forward with that one at this point.
CCEC?
No, the, I sent an update to the council. The last meeting, the big, and the entire discussion was related to summer events. I provided the council with where we're going with regards to those events. And for those that are listening in, I'll quickly summarize it. The discussion really was the community picnic, and what do we do with that? Because that's coming up quickly in August. And then also Fire Rescue Days, which has been rescheduled until September. And really, what it did was talking about why do we move Fire Rescue Days to September? And then what do we do based on expectations or lack of knowledge of what the COVID restrictions are going to be at that time? And that's constantly moving target. But anytime you're doing a big event, there's a lead time to be able to schedule things, payments that have to be made, commitments that have to be made. So where we ended up, long and short, was that we will be canceling the community picnic this year with the intent that we will reprogram the resources that we've got to that event to our Fire Rescue Days efforts. Because we don't know what the restrictions are gonna be out of the COVID, we have canceled the regular parade because we can have thousands of people along the parade route. We can have a couple thousand in the downtown alone, potentially. And so for that to be feasible, you would basically have to have all COVID restrictions lifted. You can have as many people as you want, and they can intermingle as much as they want. We don't think that that's highly likely by September. We still think there would be some level of restrictions, social distancing in place, or at least to a degree that we don't wanna risk it. So what we decided to do is to have a first responders parade, which would include fire, ambulance, police, sheriff, et cetera. And they would be similar to the parade of hope we had earlier in the year, where they would go around the community. It would have an extended route that would pretty much hit every neighborhood so that most individuals can stay in their own yard or possibly go to a friend's or neighbor's that's within the community scene that they're already socializing with. They could have, if you want, you can have your relatives over, but they're in your yard. So it'll allow for that social distancing. And then we would maybe use those dollars we used out of the community picnic to fund throwables. We have to work with the COVID potential issues, that, but candy and other trinkets and stuff we might throw from the vehicles. So we can still provide for that parade atmosphere that everybody has, but we can do it in a manner which is more respectful of the current situation related to the pandemic. One of the things that helped contribute to this is the fire relief, which was the other big draw event. They've already canceled the dance. They're just gonna be doing their dinner this year that was already scheduled for that weekend. And so we're already starting to lose two big draw events. The intent is that individual organizations, let's say the Alliance with their Steak Fry, individual businesses which might have events, such as Double Y, which has their wrestling event, the track that normally has their, they usually have any destruction that we've had, things like that. Individual businesses, if they wanted to participate in those events within whatever COVID restrictions are in place, great. But it would be up to them. And we've already got some feedback that some of those events may not happen because they rely upon those big draw events to bring people to this. So more to come, but that's where we're at.
Let's see, scale?
I have nothing specific to report on, on scale.
Okay, executive committee?
I have nothing to report on that either.
Service delivery committee?
I have nothing specific to report on that.
Okay, unified transit?
They have not had a meeting since before the first of the year. And I haven't seen any information coming down the pike as to when they're going to resume those meetings.
Do we want to keep them on our agenda then? Or just put them back on when we hear from them?
I would leave it on there for now. At some point, they're gonna get rolling down those lines.
Okay. MBTA?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay. I thirty-five?
We haven't had a meeting since the last time I updated the council, but Matt Johnson from Savage, Ryan Peterson from Burnsville, Tom Wolf and I are on the budget committee for this group. And the only minor change was Lakeville crept up into the next tier, so they doubled their payment amount to six thousand from three thousand. What that means, and so what we're proposing is, we just advise Lakeville to that they're gonna be paying the six thousand instead of the three thousand, so they'll have to adjust theirs. Ryan had proposed a couple different options, so we can just add the three thousand to the total budget, and we can start to have more in the reserves or be able to do more, fund more advocacy, or whatever might be needed in the future years. Or we could start to share the savings, I guess, and reduce what everybody else's, take that three thousand, spread it out amongst the rest of the group. I mean, really, it would reduce ours by a hundred and twenty bucks for one option, or I think up to three hundred dollars savings for our city. So I think the four of us have agreed to propose just add it into the lump, assuming you guys are comfortable with not saving potentially up to three hundred dollars a year. And we'll go forward with that, so.
Wonderful. Anything, you guys have questions on? Okay. Chamber of Commerce? Have anything? All right, discussion bank helps. Council, anybody? You guys are a quiet bunch today.
We will, so once we join this meeting, we'll reopen the work session.
Do we wanna talk about the policy committees? We were gonna bring that up at the last meeting. League of Municipal Policy Committee?
You are correct. Also, member Novak. I think we just further discussion as to who might be participating, when and why. But again, we're missing forty percent of the council for that discussion tonight. So I will make sure that it's on the agenda for discussion, either under administration or council discussion at the next meeting.
Okay, because those meetings will start the week after our next meeting.
So is there some form of an email you can shoot out, or?
I'll, in my council update, next council update, I'll mention that, hey, we're gonna be talking about it for the next meeting, so you need to be prepared to be aware of when those meeting times are and be able to commit at that point.
And Tom, do you want us to email you so you can send it out to the group? Or maybe it's just as part of the discussion next time? You know, I'm signed up right now for the Metro Cities Transportation and General Government Committee as well as the Metro Cities Housing and Economic Development. And then for the league, signed up for the Local Economies one, I believe.
So that's an approach, is that if you have a level of interest, and given the level of trust and working relationship on the council, I would suggest that if you have any interest, just put your name in the ad. If for whatever reason, you need to withdraw, it's not a big deal. But at least you'll get on their list for provision of information when the meetings are gonna be at, all of that, prior to the council discussion.
So reach out to the municipal cities and metro cities?
Yeah, we just need to use contact information they provide. Say, hey, I'm interested in serving as a representative from Alcoa New Market.
I know at last meeting, Joe said he was pretty strapped for time, so I don't think he's a participant.
That's still my understanding.
Is there a way that if there are some that interest you, that you can email it to Tom so that he can get it to us so we don't double up?
Yeah, I mean, I'm essentially willing and able to do any of them, but.
Signing up for all of them?
Capacity for myself, I do all, no, but.
So as part of that, I'll get Johnson's and I'll board out, take out every volunteer to serve on these, if anybody wants to serve on the remaining ones.
Okay.
Let me know when I'll advise rest of the council.
Perfect. All right.
Well, and I guess I would just add, too, I mean, you don't have to be signed up for them to show up either. So if there, if we figure out who's on the agenda for some of these, and it's typically the committees in August where they have presenters and stuff, if we see what's on those agendas, we can jump right in and attend whether we're on the actual committee or not, so.
You know, are they still gonna be, you said that they're gonna hold meetings before our next council meeting? Are they Zoom meetings then?
June thirteenth is the league's first one, and I think Metro Cities, they have them right coinciding, so. Yeah, it's a time commitment for those weeks.
And so then I'm just gonna ask a dumb question. If it's a Zoom meeting and there's three of us that are interested in attending it, does it have to be posted?
Yes.
Okay.
They're at that next council meeting because they would have to be posted, like that day.
You can't post it that.
No, like that, because it's two days and then three.
Yeah.
So we, we'll just have to make sure we don't have three people participating in that coming Monday then.
Yeah.
Or if we think there are, they can just post it right now.
No, that's true, too, but I don't think that will be the case.
I'll bow out. If two of you wanna do one of the meetings, I'll bow out. I'll watch the recording and get the minutes.
That is the most likely scenario.
It's up to you guys. I'm sure that this email will come shortly, and then we can just click, do email back and forth to Tom, and he'll make the decision if it needs to be posted or not. Okay. Good, all right.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Novak?
Second.
Second by Berg. Amanda?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Aye. And business meeting is officially closed at seven forty-three.